आई जांगल के अंगेरे कर्तव्य पादवीरतिल वेरिवन नी कर्तव्य वरिगलोरीकेदिन आयस्तोत्रम करिन्या रण्डर रात्रिल्लूम नी जांगलोड़ि हृदयमाय संसारिचु अंगेरे कृपयोड़ बुतंकानुवार कर्तव्य जांगल पाडियदो ओले कर्तव्य इन्नर रात्रिल्लूम आख्रिबा अलविल्लाद जांगड़मेल पगरणमें कर्तव्य देवकृपा ओरिकल कुड़े रुजिचारीवान अदिन एस्पर्शन जांगड़ा शरीरतिल अरीवान देवसानुत्यतिन देखर्तवे बेलम जांगड़े आलमाविल तिरिचारीवान अदियांगड़ा कुन्यांगड़ा स्पर्शिकिवान अदियांगड़ा सहोदिनीमारे सहोदरमारे अभिषक्तनमारे स्पर्शिकिवान इडवरुतनमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न ओरिकल कुड़े कर्तव्य इमीटिंग अंगड़ा त्रिकरंगली लेल्पिच्च प्रार्थिकिन्न अंगे इधिन अत्यश्न आईरिकनमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न देवकृपे जांगल मरकनमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न जांगड़ा कोयरने अनिंग्रेच्च प्रार्थिकिन्न अबरुड़ा पाड़ुम्बोल इदेश तिले के देवतिन देव माविरगिवेरिवन इडवरणमें हल्ले होविल्ड शब्दम अदिमान पेड़गले प्रसविकिन्न अदिम वरंगले तोलिरिकिन्न रवजनतिल जांगल वायकिन्न वाले इदेश तय इरलिल्लिन वेलचतिले कुंडरिवान इडवरुतनमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न इन्नर रात्रिल्लूम करणवन जनता जांगल अनिंग्रेच्च प्रार्थिकियान कृपये जांगल मरकन तुरुनुल्ल सगर सुसुषगलुम अंगेरे त्रिकरंगली लेल्पिकिन्न सक्तमाय निराबिषक्तने इन्नर रात्रिल्लू नी उपयोगिकनमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न करणवन जनता जांगल अनिंग्रेच्च प्रार्थिकिन्न सुसुषिपान नी जांगल अभिषेकन जयनमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न प्रार्थनेगड़न आयस्तोत्रम एश्विन नामतिल ने आमी तुरुनुल्ल सुसुषगल के वेंडी प्रार्थने ओड़ा तमक देवसनदिली रिक एड़िदेट दिलकुम्बोल पाटगल पाड़ी तमक देव तय आराधिक
अत्युच्छत्ती पाड़ुम यान कर्तवी अंगत्रयो महोदन अत्युच्छत्ती पाड़ुम यान कर्तवी अंगत्रयो महोदन ओ देवमें राजा दी राजा देवा आदियंतम ईराम हिसरे सर्व लोगम अंगे वन्निक्युम्मे साधु जारुम विणुवाणंगुम्मे ओ देवमें राजा दी राजा देवा आदियंतम ईराम हिसरे सर्व लोगम अंगे वन्निक्युम्मे साधु जारुम विणुवाणंगुम्मे अत्युच्छत्ती पाड़ुम यान कर्तवी अंगत्रयो महोदन अत्युच्छत्ती पाड़ुम यान कर्तवी अंगत्रयो महोदन सईंकेंगली नायगन अंगल्यो धन्यनाया एकाधि पदियम इम्मालुवे नीर नाम देवगुम्मी अन्यमिल्लेदु तवतामं सईंकेंगली नायगन अंगल्यो धन्यनाया एकाधि पदियम इम्मालुवे नीर नाम देवगुम्मी अन्यमिल्लेदु तवतामं अत्युच्छत्ती पाड़ुम यान कर्तवी अंगत्रयो महोदन 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 हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया आमे 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 आराधने इल्ल मायगने अंगे न्याराराधिक्य अभिषेकर्ती परुम्मवनी अंगे न्याराराधिक्य आराधने इल्ल मायगने अंगे न्याराराधिक्य अभिषेकर्ती परुम्मवनी अंगे न्याराराधिक्य हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया आमे 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 आश्वासम नीए आश्रयम नीए अंगे न्याराराधिक्य इन्पवुम नीए निणाइल्ला तामवे अंगे न्याराराधिक्य आश्वासम नीए आश्रयम नीए अंगे न्याराराधिक्य इन्पवुम नीए निणाइल्ला तामवे अंगे न्याराराधिक्य अंगे न्याराराधिक्य एप्लेस ए अंगे न्याराराधिक्य हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया आमे 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 हल्ले लुया आमे हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया आमे हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया आमे
नम्मुड़ा देवम अवन आराधना कुदियन अल्लाह अवन आराधना की योगिन यथरवर्क नम्मी उल्ल हदेत ओड़ा देवसनदिल राजतुरम अवन आराधना इड़न नायगन अन अवन महुत्ततिन दायगन अन हल्ले लुया अवन सर्वशक्तन आय देवम अन नम्मुक करंगल अडिच्च पाड़ा कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला नित्यतेजसिन कनमोर्तु डुबो नोडिनेरते कुल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारम करंगल अडिच्च पाड़ी नम्मुक देव तय
पियन्दे वरविम तोनी भुरंगुम प्राकले पोले मां पारंधुयरुम कानंदे प्रियनाक मणवालनी कावित्यु सुर्गिया माणियरई पियन्दे वायविम तोनी भुरंगुम प्राकले पोले नाम पारंधुयरुम आरंधे प्रियनाक मणवालनी कावित्यु सुर्गिया माणियरई कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला नित्यतेजसिन कनमोत फिडुपो नोडी नेरते कुल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला मणवालंगवरुम वानमेगत्ती मायंगा दिनियु सामयमिल्ला मध्यकासपिंगल महतिनपी मणवाट्टियाय नाम पारंधुपोग मणवालंगवरुम वानमेगत्ती मायंगा दिनियु सामयमिल्ला मध्यकासपिंगल महतिनपी मणवाट्टियाय नाम पारंधुपोग कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला नित्यतेजसिन कनमोत फिडुपो नोडी नेरते कुल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला जादिगय जादियोड़े दत्तिडुपो जगतिन फीडगल पेरुदिडुपो जीवित भारकल वर्धिच्चिडुपो जीवन्दे नायगन वेदों मंदिरु जादिगय जादियोड़े दत्तिडुपो जगतिन फीडगल पेरुदिडुपो जीवित भारकल वर्धिच्चिडुपो जीवन्दे नायगन वेदों मंदिरु कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला हल्ले लुया नित्यतेजसिन कनमोत फिडुपो नोडी नेरते कुल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला युद्धवुम शाववुम भूगंभगणुम युद्धिन सूर्यम केल्कुनिल्लयो इस्लाहे लिंदयोम केढुमकल्लम्मे एश्विन जनमे ओरुकुगनाम युद्धवुम शाववुम भूगंभगणुम युद्धिन सूर्यम केल्कुनिल्लयो इस्लाहे लिंदयोम केढुमकल्लम्मे एश्विन जनमे ओरुकुगनाम कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला नित्यतेजसिन कनमोत फिडुपो नोडी नेरते कुल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला नित्यतेजसिन कनमोत फिडुपो नोडी नेरते कुल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला कष्टंगल सारमिल्ला कन्नूनीर सारमिल्ला हल्ले लुया 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 न्यारा
हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया देवतिन बरिशु धालम अवन द सानित्यम अदिन नम्मुला अनिभव चरण योड़े रिकियान अदिम अन्यमोल याले तिनमें फैदर रहियान अभिषेकन कर्तव्य देवसनदिली रगिवेरिवन बोल हल्ले लुया देवतय जस्त रगिवेरिवन बोल अवड़ा देवतिन तेजस सुसुषिपान रिड़े आइटी हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया तुरुनुल्ल बजन सुसुष वायचोड़ नम्मुला लवर प्रार्थन रिकिम्बोल हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया बैकेंड्रील लव बीच एनिपम तुरुनुल्ल सुसुष वायचोड़ प्रार्थिकिन्न आय रिक हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया हल्ले लुया स्तोत्रम 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 महाविष्णु धनाय जांगड़ा देव में सुरगस्त वर्मिदावे अपचार्य जांगल जीवतिन निनल्ला सावगास्तिन आय निन नम्मु ओड़ा स्तुदिकिन्न स्तोत्र जिन अर्तावे अर्तावे करिन्या रण्डर दिवसंगल अर्तावे नी वक्तमाय जांगलोड़ संसारिचु नल्ला अपचार्य स्तोत्रम अर्तावे इन्नर जांगलोड़ नी इडवरणमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्रम आग्रह तोड़ दाहतोड़ करणवन रिकिन्न देवजनता निंदत्रिकरंगली लेल्पिच्च प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे नी नल्ला उल्लंघोड़ नी इडवरणमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्रम उरिवेट खर्तें जांगल कर्तावे नी नाश्वासन नल्ला गणमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न आरंगिल्ले डोगत तोड़ दुक्कतोड़ करणवन नितुंडगल कर्तावे अश्वासम प्रार्थिकिन्न रिसन्दिया समय माय नी माटिदर गणमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे विशेषाल जांगल दमतितिले कई चिरिंग देवदासने निंदत्रिकरंगली लेल्पिच्च प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्रम निंददासने आय जांगल दमतितिल नी उपयोगचु निरिकिन्न अदिनाय निन नम्मु ओड़ा स्तुदिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्रम पुत्तन कृपगल अल्कर्तावे याजिंगले नेडुआ निंददासने नी उपयोगप्रदर्शनमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्रम करिन्या रण्डर दिवसंगल आय जांगलोड़ संसारिचु निरिकिन्न अर्तावे निंदकृपया अल्कर्तावे जांगल विड़े आय रिकिन्न लपचार्य स्तोत्रम जांगल कपुगुवान नुन्नु इल्ल अर्तावे निंदकृपया लुन्नु मात्रम आऊनु जांगल आय रिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्रंग अर्तावे नम्मु ओड़ा निन स्तुदिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्रम नत्य बजन सुसुषिकाय अडिंगले निंदत्रिकरंगली खताज साउर्पिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्र पा 3200 में नी गिलकिन्न अर्तावे बजन नी जांगल कनल्गी तर्णमें न प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे स्तोत्रम बजनंगल केट अर्तावे जांगल तन्ने चादिकिन्न विरायटल अर्तावे स्तोत्रम लुभांद्रम प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे निंदकृपया 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 नल्ला पाटगल पाड़वान निन आराधिपान नी जांगल बिल्लपर्तियल अर्तावे स्तोत्रम कुड़ियां निरिकिन्न जांगल उरिकुड़ निंदत्रिकरंगली लेल्पिच्च प्रार्थिकिन्न अर्तावे लीड यवन बिच्च पास्टर नी बिल्लपर्तियन आयस्तोत्रम अर्तावे अल्प समय उड़ा जांगल निंदत्रिकरंगली आय रिकिन्न नी जांगलोड़ वक्तमाय डबट अपचार्य स्तोत्रम प्रार्थनेगड़ गुर्विक आयस्तोत्र वेस्ट नाव तन्ने प्रार्थने ओड़ा तमक देवसनदिली रिकाय इमीटिंग ले करणवन नल्ला वरे वेगम वर्णन आयुष्य कुशन निस्तल नामतिल इमीटिंग ले कस्वागदन जिन न प्रत्येक जगर तावन दासन पास्टर बीम मोनचंद पास्टर देवते स्तुदिकिन्न कर्तावन दासने ओरिकल कुड़े इमीटिंग ले कस्वागदन जिन्नो इतरकन नड़ेल्ल मुन्नु दिवस जांगल के वेंडी माटिविच्च दिल जांगल नम्मी उल्ल वराण यान एंड चरुप्पा मुदल कन्नोशन नोटिसल के यान इन्नल्ल कर्तावन दासन ओड़ा बारण जांगल कानुन नरिपेयर अन बीम मोनचंद कायंगुलम कर्तावन दासने औरकुम्बोल निकुत्र संतोषम उड़ि पौरकलतिल इतरेम वर्षम विश्वस्त दे ओड़ा निन्न दौरत नम्मुक करंगल व्यर्थित देवते स्तुदिक्याम तुरुनुल्ल बजन सुसुषगल के वेंडी स्नेहत ओड़ा कर्तावन दासन पास्टर बीम मोनचंद ट्रांसलेट युन लिंसी सिस्टम
प्राइस लॉर्ड कर्म युद्ध देवतन स्तोत्रम शया ओरिकल कुड़ा शक्ति ओड़ा नम्मु ग्रमाय रात्रि उड़ा निश्चित दुख केम ओतुवन आय देवतन स्तोत्रम शयन्नो
एंड आई गिव डी लॉर्ड वंस अगेन ऑल ग्लोरी एंड ओनर
देवर आज जीविस्तरिक्य त्वानिकिन अभिषेकन मार आय देवदासन मार्कुम एश्विन रेक्त ताल बुलिचु वर्धिक पट्टा शुभ ठिकण प्रार्थिच्च देवम क्लाइन निल्ल किल्लोरकुम कर्ताविन निस्तुल्य नामतिल स्नेहवादन नल्लो गोयान
एंड आई ब्रिंग ग्रीटिंग्स अंटू ईच एंड एवरी वन ऑफ यू स्वीटेड हियर एंड एस्पेशली डी सर्वेंस ऑफ गॉड डोज वर्किंग इन डी किंगडम ऑफ गॉड
देव बजनोम एश्विन द सार्चन निमित्तम ईरात्तिलुम निंद दमतियाई रिपान कर्तावन नवील रिया वसन न जांगल तावन वाटलर पिकियान
एंड आई गिव थैंक्स अंटू डी लॉर्ड फॉर वंस अगेन इनेबलिंग मी तू बी इन मिस्टर फियोल विद डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड
अलर चुड़िया दिवसंगल यान इविड़े उल्लायरनु अदिल मुन्नु दिवसन निंगोड़ पायरिकिन्न लिंक संतोषम
एंड आई वस हियर इन दिस कंट्री ओनली फॉर डी फ्यू डेज एंड अमंग दिवस डेज इट इस ग्रेट जॉय डेट आई वस एबल तू बी विथ यू फॉर दिस थ्री डेज
नानी लास्ट वागन नर्त्य प्री मैथ्यू एंड क्रिस्टियों वान्न तुंड अवर योर देवते स्तुदिक्यान
एंड डी लास्ट वेडिंग डेट आई हद कंडक्टेड एंड वी हैव मैथ्यू एंड क्रिस्टी हियर एंड वी गिव थैंक्स अंटू डी लॉर्ड फॉर देम
ईरात्तिय देवन मोड़ समसारिपन वालर प्रार्थ उड़ा देवसलाई रिकाय
एंड लेट इस बी इन डी प्रेसेंस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड सो डेट डी लॉर्ड में स्पीक तू अस टुलाइट
18 वर्षम मुंबान यान विड़े देवन प्रसन्निकान आदिम वन
एंड आई टोल्ड यू अर्लियर डेट इट वस 18 इयर्स अगो डेट आई केम हियर तू प्रीच डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड
18 वर्षम विंडो आदिम आय टान विड़े
एंड आफ्टर डेट इट इस फॉर डी फर्स्ट टाइम डेट आई वस कम हियर अगेन
इन्नर पागल यानु नम्मु देवदासन पास्टर साम जॉन वाई नम्मु पट्टनतिल पार्लमेंट वन निरो एन अड़तोक नुवैर नुवैर वोट उड़द
एंड आई वेंट विथ पास्टर साम जॉन टुडे तू विजिट लंदन एंड डी पार्लमेंट एंड एवरीथिंग
अब उड़ पलगारिंगल यान ओड़े न औरके उड़ा
एंड आई रिमेंबर्ड अन लॉट ऑफ थिंग्स
करिन्या अंजू वर्षतिन उल्ल मुनिल अधियंत अवना मरनतिन तनत करंगलन तेरियत यदा
एंड फॉर डी फाइव इन डी पास्ट फाइव इयर्स फॉर थ्री टाइम्स आई नियरली वस आई आई हैव फेस तू डेथ फेस तू फेस
2021 जनवरी मासम 21 नाल अंतियति 11 मनिक्यूर यान देवन प्रसन्निच्च यान तन्ने कार उड़च्च विटिल चंद गिरिन्या पॉल अंडे हृदयस्पननम निलचु येन डॉक्टर मार्च निकिन्न तिलिकी कार्डियक कष्ट उड़ा किया
अन ट्वेंटी फोर्थ ऑफ जनवरी 2021 आई प्रीच्ड फॉर वन एंड अन हाफ आवर्स एंड आफ्टर डेट आई ड्रोव डी कम मायसेल्फ एंड व्हेन आई रिच देयर डॉक्टर्स टोल्मी डेट आई हैव आई हैव आई हद अन कार्डियक अरेस्ट
लोग मंगुमुल्ला देवम क्लनिक उड़नी प्रार्थिचु
एंड पीपल ऑफ गॉड फ्रॉम ऑल ओवर डी वर्ल्ड प्रेट फॉर मी
ई सभयम निकुड़नी प्रार्थनी करिया
एंड आई नो एवं दिस चर्च प्रेट फॉर मी
निंगोड़ अंडे हृदयतिन वाशिल नम्मी अरिकियान
एंड आई वुड लाइक तू गिव मी ग्रेटिट्यूड अंटू यू
अंडे सुशत गिरनुट्टल अदिनाल देव अंडे आय सुधर्कमाकी
एंड बिकॉज़ डेट पोपस इस नॉट फिनिश्ड येट डेट इस वाइड डी लॉर्ड एक्सटेंडेड माय लाइफ
अदिन शेषन रण्डिल अधियंत अवना मेडिकल अलर्जी उड़ा जुगतिल मरनवें डिले
एंड आफ्टर डेट तू मोर टाइम्स इन फॉर्म ऑफ मेडिकल अलर्जी आई फेस डी डेथ अगेन
अदो रिप्रावश उड़न बोल यान ऑस्ट्रेलियन प्रसन्निक चिट्टा वन अड़ता आयस्ट एंड मस्किटल प्रसन्निक बन रिकिम्बोल
एंड डी फर्स्ट डी सेकंड टाइम डी वन ऑफ डी टाइम व्हेन इट हैपन आई वस इन ऑस्ट्रेलिया आई हद प्रीच्ड देयर एंड आई वस गेटिंग रेडी तू गो तू मस्किट फॉर अनदर डी मीटिंग
अंडे तले दिवसम इंग्लैंडले को वरानाई कोची एयरपोर्ट लेती रुपंगोच्चा अवड़ा वच्च कोड़े जोड़न में
एंड डेट अन डे बिफोर डेट अन गर्ल वो वस मेंट तू कम तू इंग्लैंड एट कोची एयरपोर्ट शी फेल शी कोल्लाब्स एंड शी डाइट
रण्डर दवन यान कोड़े जुवीनंग किलम एंड आय से कर्ताविन स्री फंडारतिल कट
एंड एवं तो तू टाइम्स आई हद कोल्लाब्स बट माय लॉर्ड एक्सटेंडेड माय लाइफ
ईरात्तिल हॉली वन देवम कुड़ गारिंज न बरायाम
एंड टुनाइट आई वांट तू टेल यू डोज वर हियर इन डी हॉल
देवतिन निंगले कुरुचु द पत्ता दी उड़न
डी लॉर्ड हस अन पोपस फॉर यू
हार्ट अटैक निंगले कोल्लन गड़ीला
हार्ट अटैक कैन नॉट किल यू
कैंसर निंगले कोल्लन गड़ीला
कैंसर विल नॉट किल यू
कोरोना के निंगले कोल्लन गड़ीला
कोरोना कैन कोरोना कैन नॉट किल यू
देवतिन द पत्ता दी पुर्तीकरिकिन्न वरे नम्मु लिपुलिकान
एंड अंटिल एंड अनलेस वी फुल्फिल डी पोपस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड वी विल बी हियर ऑन डी सर
2021 निल्ल अंडे हृदयस्पनन निलचु न लोगोम डॉक्टरम आरोक चिन्दीच्चा पॉल
इन 2021 व्हेन माय हार्ट बीट हद स्टॉप व्हेन डी वर्ल्ड एंड डॉक्टर्स थॉट डेट आई वुड नॉट सरवाइव
2025 इदर्द अमेज़ मासविन अत्राधियति 15 अंतियति लंदन पंदक को सचर्च डे पोडियतिल यान नल्कनमन 2025, idatham may massu inathradiyadi, padinjanthi yadi, London Pandokos Church de, poodyathil, yana nilkana manna, deva tamburan, thanda diarye eridi vichitun.
But it was already written in the diary of the Lord that in twenty twenty-five, fifteenth of May, I would stand with the word of God in this podium of London Pentecostal Church.
Yana padinaiyirangal oru parayinu raathu, nindhi oru parayam, nindhi oru kuruchoorla, nindhi oru kudumathay kuruchoorla, nindhi oru kunyangalay kuruchoorla. Pishaajinda pathadigal paraajipadum, devatinda pathadi vijayikum.
And as I say thousands, let me tell you that whatever the traps and schemes the devil has for you, for your family, for your future, your children, they are all going to fail in the name of Jesus.
Visheshikinu nindhi oru kayal sorgetla kuyarthipadikiga.
And if you believe that, you can lift your hands to the heaven.
Kayi taatadu, kayi uyarthipadikiga.
And do not put your hands down, would you lift your hands to the Lord?
Eshu enda apigaramulla naamatal nindhi raathu parayiga.
And with the authority of Jesus Christ's name, I tell you. And devil, you evil one.
Dushtapishaajay.
You evil devil.
Enda pathadi alla.
It is not your plan.
Enda devatinda pathadi.
But the plan of the Lord.
Enda kudumathinme.
In my family.
Enda kunyangadame.
About my children.
Niwartikipadukadanachayum.
And it shall fulfill.
Kayal adi chanyavashadhi deva tasuthichada.
Would you clap your hands, speak in tongues and proclaim?
Eshu enda apigaramulla naamatal parayiga. Odamma shambala ryanavadurana parayiga. Pishaajinda pathadi paraajipadum. Devatinda pathadi vijayikum. Shakti oru aradshuduparayiga. Eshu enda naamatal parayiga. Pishaajithothavanan, eshu jaythavanan, avanda pathadigal paraajipadum. Devatinda pathadi vijayikum. Hallelujah! Esu the Bible oru vakhimikinaa unda.
And the word of God says.
21 naasangitra maravakhim.
Sam seventy-one verses six.
Yana palarkum oralpu damai rikinu.
And I shall be, I, I am, I am, I am a.
Yana palarkum oralpu damai rikinu.
I am a wonder to many.
Yana palarkum oralpu damai rikinu.
And I am a wonder to many.
Esu vasuru parayana, nindhi oru kadiimoh.
And would you say that with faith?
Yana palarkum oralpu damai rikinu.
That I am a wonder to many.
Jeevi kinnadheyo vaidal palarkum oralpu daman.
And a child of God will be, will be a wonder to many.
Need doctor markor alpu daman.
And you will be a wonder for many.
Need vaidyeshasan oralpu daman.
And you are a miracle to the medical history.
Need mandravadiki maabijarekanu oralpu daman.
And you are a miracle to people, those who do witchcraft.
Need kayal adi chanyavashadhi deva tasuthichunda parayiga.
And would you clap hands and speak in tongues?
Yana palarkum oralpu daman.
And I am a miracle to many.
Yana palarkum oralpu daman.
And I am a wonder to many.
Deva vaidal, pishaajin oralpu daman. Neesatana oralpu daman.
You are a miracle, a wonder to the devil.
Nindhi pathadi akavasanicha, navan chindichada.
And if he thinks that, oh, when are these plans going to end?
Need tirnan navan chindichada.
And he thought that you are finished.
Nindhi shaptam illa, ayam chindichada.
He thought that your voice has been shut forever.
Enda vandu pathadigal, tagarto undu vindu marppidan, deva kravamirikia.
But the Lord has given us grace, forsaking all the plans that the devil have to proclaim and worship the Lord.
Deva maklani orikil kuda kayal adi chadhi deva tasuthichada.
And will all children of God clap your hands and give all praise and glory unto the Lord. Amen, hallelujah.
Ivedan yana verum oru paradeshipo. Ivedathaparpidamo, variyambalam karamadijo. Ivedan yana verum oru paradeshipo. Ivedathaparpidamo. Illengiyo. Thunayagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Thunayagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Enikendey eshu neele kandalmadi. Channamadige. Ihatiile maya sugam vittalvadi. Enikendey eshu neele kandalmadi. Ihatiile maya sugam vittalvadi. Paramseepi aipaninyan nagaramadi. Paramseepi aipaninyan nagaramadi. Paramodukkuudavayana pooyalvadi. Paramodukkuudavayana pooyalvadi. Enikendey eshu neele kandalmadi. Ihatiile maya sugam vittalvadi. Enikendey eshu neele kandalmadi. Ihatiile maya sugam vittalvadi. Orikalpa baandagarakkunyadil yaan. Marijavanaai kidamno, chidathu nimno. Orikalpa baandagarakkunyadil yaan. Marijavanaai kidamno, luvendan. Uyathinin noorameenne niruthiyavan. Uyathinin noorameenne niruthiyavan. Urapullaparaagum Kristesuvii. Urapullaparaagum Kristesuvii. Enikendey eshu neele kandalmadi. Ihatiile maya sugam vittalvadi. Enikendey eshu neele kandalmadi. Ihatiile maya sugam vittalvadi. Ivedan yana verum oru paradeshipo. Ivedathaparpidamo variyambalam. Maame. Ivedan yana verum oru paradeshipo. Ivedathaparpidamo variyambalam. Ivedan nikarum thuna illena nillum. Ivedan nikarum thuna illena nillum. Idayagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Idayagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Aame. Enikendey eshu neele kandalmadi. Ihatiile maya sugam vittalvadi. 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 Ooripana vaitumana sadhotano. Thunayagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Ooripana eshu neele kandalmadi. Thunayagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Enikendey eshu neele kandalmadi. Ihatiile maya sugam vittalvadi. Ooripana reidisneidiraidalvadi. Urapullaparaagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Jesus take it all. Ivedan nikarum thuna illan kilum. Thuna yavvan enda kuda unda.
Even if there is no help for you here, there is one who's your ever help.
Kayi onni oru thupidje.
Would you lift your hands up?
Neen ik thonda naratsundu, dandanda stance sundu, pokki edukankirinu, onnu, onnu, edutte. Ivedan nikarum thuna illan kilum. 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 Thunayagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Idayagum eshuodu chernalmadi. Ivedan tena karum thuna yagilankilum.
Even if you have no help here.
Tenak thuna yavvan uyarathil unda.
The one who's your ever present help is always with you.
Yana nee oru naal kayal udilila, weechikuyi.
He will never forsake you, he will never abandon you.
Aarallan kayal vittal, kayal vidda, thurukartavu namudu oru unda.
No matter whoever leave or forsake us, we have a Lord who will always take care of us.
Esu vasuru kayal adi chadhi shakti oru deva tasuthikida.
With faith, would you clap your hands and with strength, would you give him all your worship?
Yes, thank you Lord. Personal property, padnappu, padnappu damatthai, mundenindu vakhimil vayik, X chapter nineteen, words one and two.
Apalos korindil rikimbo, Paulus ulpradeshinil kudi sanjericha, Ephesosilethi, chellashishinmarayekandu, nindhi oru visvastidhi parishuddhatmaavane pravichuvaenavaru choditsedana, parishuddhatma undanu polim, nindhi oru kettitilaenavaru paranju.
Yes. Nindhi oru, ah, wise.
While Apalos was that Corinth Paul took the road through the interior and arrived as Ephesus, there he found some disciples and asked them, did you receive the Holy Spirit when you believed? They answered, no, we have not even heard that there is a Holy Spirit.
Nindhi oru visvastidhi parishuddhatmaavane pravichuvaenavaru.
Did you receive the Holy Spirit when you believed?
Nindhi oru visvastidhi parishuddhatmaavane pravichuvaenavaru.
Did you believe when you received the Holy Spirit?
Nindhi raathu oru vandil, oru deva almavu chodikian, nindhi oru parishuddhatmaavane pravichuvaenavaru.
And this is the question that the Holy Spirit asking, did you receive the Holy Spirit?
E kara kattatil, valarayantittidarike padula padam aanu, parishuddhatmaavum, almannarvokai.
And fulfilling in the spirit and Holy Spirit is a very misunderstood subject.
Namada kunyangalkum chellagariyangal manchilagundu, e visayam nindhi raathu, yana samshari kanaa greehikian.
So that our children may also understand, I would like to speak on this topic.
Endan parishuddhatma vishayakam.
What is the anointing of the Holy Spirit?
Endan anya phasha.
What is speaking in tongues?
E nothandi deyarampatil parishuddhatma shaktike, saachim magipan, namada pidakkan maranikitirichapol, palayalakalum paranjada, iduridaram, hysteria roghamanaana, narambo roghamanaana.
And when our forefathers, in the beginning of the century, when they started to speaking tongues and worship in that manner, many people, they said that this was a disease, a hysterical disease.
Enal, hysteria, historical alla, hysteria roghamanaana, narambo roghamanaana, manchilagundu.
It is like, it is like a disease, a disease of the mind.
Enal, annida, narambo roghamanaana paranjuvar, hysteriaana paranjuvar, nyanku idu venu, nuparani budnarka.
But the same people, those who said that this is hysteria, this is the disease of the mind, they are now wanting to receive the same.
And the hallelujah, stotrathe akkaliyakivar, ina hallelujah, nuparani, thodangia, pinanirtunu varivadila.
And those people who mocked us by saying hallelujah and stotram today, they would call out hallelujah without any stopping.
Startiyanariya, stopiyanariya.
They know how to start, but they do not know how to stop.
Evar hallelujah parayan thodangipan, namalu pandokosan, hallelujah bamba kada.
And when they started to speak hallelujah, Pentecostals have stopped saying hallelujah.
Eipu andil, yana parayan, oru hallelujah parayanai.
And look here, even I have to tell you to take, to speak hallelujah.
Hallelujah!
Amen, hallelujah.
Yana kuda kuda paray, stotrathe kalyakunakunna, deva otthuri stotram parikian.
And many times I say, those who mock praising the Lord, the Lord will make them praise the Lord.
Hallelujahyakalyakunakunna, deva otthuri hallelujah parikian.
And the ones who have mocked hallelujah, the Lord made them say hallelujah several times.
Chelladu prasangikanae, nindhi, thinnal staanatu, astaanatun stotro, hallelujahing glory paranjakeka.
And the people, when they start to preach, we've seen them, that they would use hallelujah and stotram here and there when it is not even needed.
Yana glory, enda bari glory to God, yana kubaranjakeka.
And I say glory and I say glory to God.
Yedakadaki stotram paranjana, korthonam, otthuri stotrathe kalyakibuliyapuliy.
And the one who says a lot of praise the Lord, are the ones who probably mocked that phrase before.
Hallelujah!
Amen, hallelujah.
Hallelujah! E pandokosan, shaktike saachivipan, arati pular, prushutthanaa, iru manishan edidiyada, ipudumalayakapayimbo, thiritakaragal mulachuvarum, athul mulachu anadana, unun sarundekapandokosan, nalla velikittumbo, athukavadu vandu varanju.
And at the beginning of the Pentecostal, the person who experienced the growth, they said that as the first rain falls and you see a lot of new things creep out of the earth, it is only like that, but nothing more than that.
Paray, ununun sarum, matu paliren karanu vayipandokosan, thurinkaranu vayitila, karna pandokosan, ivarada yaraim vage alla, ida devatinda vage ayarun.
And those people, those who said, and those who spoke about such things, they have now gone away from the earth, but Pentecostal is still here.
Pandokosan, thinaravil, ebeda aarathikin, deva maklani kaaanu vandu, yana deva tasuthikinu, idu karanu vogaan pogun nila, karna vaakthatam, nindhi oru kulla daana, nindhi oru maklani kulla daana, deva mai kartaavu vichuvarithanu, durastan maraya, yavarkamulada.
And let me tell you that this power of Pentecostal is not going anywhere because this has been given to us with authority and this power is for you, for your children, and we receive it in the name of the Lord.
Endan al maavishayakam.
What does it mean by being filled with the Holy Spirit?
Mon, kala kattangalai, deva manchiludabadunu.
And there are in three ages that the Lord will speak to human.
Visvathatruthatil, namalu visvastikinundu.
And we believe in the Holy Trinity.
Fadainimam pidavam devatindi yugamayidunakali.
And if the Old Testament was the age of the Lord.
Budiyanimam puttrandaburanadi yugamana.
Then the New Age, the New Testament is the age of the sun.
Enal, isapayugam parishuddhatmaavindi yugamana.
But the age of the church is the Holy Spirit's age.
Fadainimital, namalu vayikinu, God for us, devam namukkuvendi yuthamchayum.
And in the Old Testament, we read that the Lord is for us, that means the Lord shall fight our battles.
Enal, budiyanimital, namalu vayikinu, abana devam namodukude, endarthamulla, Immanuel, endu parulikian.
And in the New Testament, we read that the Lord who is with us, Emmanuel, that is what the name is.
Abol, fadainimital, God for us ayirunu.
In the Old Testament, it was God for us.
Budiyanimital, God vittasaai.
And in the New Testament, God is with us.
Enal, isapayugati.
And in the age of the church.
Nindhi devatina mandiramanum.
You are the temple of the Lord.
Devatinda yavvan, nindhi orilvasikinu, yenu varinileyo.
And do you not know that the Spirit of the Lord is in you, resides in you?
Agayal, nindhi oru sharirangal deva tamukthapadutivii.
And therefore worship the Lord, glorify the Lord with your bodies.
Fadainimital, God for us ayirunu.
In the Old Testament, God was for us.
Visheshatil, God vittasaai.
In the Gospel, God is with us.
Enal, sapayugatil, God in us, devam namayakariki varidu.
But in the age of church, God is in us.
Praise the Lord!
Amen.
Parishuddhatma vishayakam, endan yojalmakal, otta vakil marvadi, truthatil, monaman ayavan, i mankoodaaretil, karkivaridu.
And my dear children, then what is Holy Spirit, if someone asks, it is that the one among the Trinity, Holy Spirit is in us, residing within us.
Devam tamburan, namudamaila rangivandala, endu sapavikum.
What happens when the Lord Almighty comes in us?
Noti padnalaam sangitraam naalavakhim.
Sam's hundred and fourteen verses four.
Sinai parvathil, devam tamburan rangiapol.
And when the Lord came down on Mount Sinai.
Sinai parvadam, birachu, endu namalu kanaanu.
And we see that the mount, it shook.
Parvadangal, muttaadigalapoleyum.
And the mountains leaped like rams.
Kunagal, kunyadigalapoleyum thulli.
And the hills like lambs.
Adutthachodhim, yana yana.
And the next question is.
Eh, parvadame, neek muttaadine poleyum.
Hey, why mountains did you?
Neek kunyadine poleyum thulunudandu.
Why did you leap like rams, you hills like lambs?
Parvathatil, tamburan rangiapol.
When the Lord came over the mountain.
Parvadam thuliyengi.
And if the mountains leaped.
Parvadam kuliyengi.
If the mountains shook.
Naapattiye mukka kilo illa than namudamail, tamburan rangambam, namalu kuliyunana, naadishaya.
Then why is it surprising that when the Holy Spirit, when the Lord comes over us, we jump and we leap, why is it of surprise to you?
Kunya, namalu thulugala, namalu thulukia.
My dear children, we are not leaping by ourselves, we are made to jump.
Namalu kuliyunala, namalu kulukka.
We are not shaking by our choice, but we are made to shake.
Nindhi noti padthu kilay undakilum, praise the Lord.
Even if you are hundred and ten kilos.
Nee atthiandha shakti, nindhi oru belbha parikimbo.
But then this mighty power comes over you.
Nindhi oru mankoodaarethir thangaan kadiila.
Your treasure, your brownies cannot handle that. And you will start to move and shake.
Eh, shakti oru aralshudukiko. Lanama, rakana, samthalarya, duma mana, hatunya, ragalkana. Hallelujah! Yes! Noti padthu tenkeb paramulla, kootan generator.
And hundred and ten ton, weighing, weighing a generator.
Walia crane kondana, vayorakuthada.
And it is with a big crane that it has been loaded down.
Walia otthuri wheelgalu la, valya truckilana, vayekondu varidu.
And a truck probably with many wheels, that is what it is used.
Walian, nattum, boltum, ittana, vayemurukunada, vayorupikina.
And big sized nuts and bolts are used in order to make it tight.
Enal, adil kuda electricity bhaavikantodagambo.
But when the electricity starts to flow from it.
Eh, waliya, 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 generator irinam, hmm, hmm, varakinnada gana.
And you would see the noise that the generator would produce.
Hallelujah!
Amen.
Hallelujah!
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah! Generator, nee varakinnada.
Generator, why do you shake like that?
Neem oolamada.
Why do you make those noises?
Por, generator parayo.
Then the generator would say.
Enda agathu oru bhaavarikida shaktike.
Hallelujah.
Enikadu vagikian kadiyunu.
And that power that flows within me, I am not able to handle it.
Yana riyaadu kulikibadu.
I am shaking.
Oba shamanarikana. Yana riyaadu, yana ragundu. Abana, regala, hadana, regalkana, samthaanikana. Hallelujah! Hallelujah! Amachimara adapel, kanyavakarunda, namada adapil, kati, tiyathikarunda.
Our grandmothers, they use this, um, the fire to cook.
Namalu saavajimarala, kanyavakarule.
And we know the pots that we use to cook.
अड्डील ती अंगोत कतिकिम्बो
And when the fire is lit underneath.
अडप्पु वात्रम चिडिकिया
And you will cover it with another, there's another
अड्डियके अंगोत तलच्चु मर्यां तुड़क
When the rice starts to boil.
तलच्चु अंगोत मर्यां तुड़कम्बो
When it starts to boil.
अडप्पु वात्रम पटप, 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 पटप नदिकान तुड़क
The plate that is used to cover, it starts to shake and hit itself.
अडप्पु वात्रम अडगीरिक्या पर्याय
And if you tell that plate that stays still.
अदु पर्याय अनिक अडगीरिक्या मया
It will say, I cannot stand still.
एन्ड आगत्तु नोर समर्थ
Because there is this great power.
ओडम आशंभला रिखाना अभिषेगम ब्राबिचमन ओड़ा, हारादिल अडगीरिपन बरन्यालु अडगीरिक्या गड़ियल्ला
The one who are anointed by the spirit, if they are asked to sit stayed, they will not be able to hold on to that.
एन्ड आगत्तु नोर समर्थ
Because there is this power within me.
शक्ति ओड़ा कर्ताविन असुधिसे, हेले लुया
And with power, would you worship the Lord?
नम्मल इदिन्ड बानसलाकन एन्न द परिषुत्थात्माभिषेगम
We need to understand what is Holy Spirit.
ई अत्यंद शक्ति
This great power.
नम्मड़ा सोम्दावल्ला
It is not ours.
इदे सुपर नैचर पॉवरान
This is a supernatural power.
इदे नम्मड़ा सोम्दावल्ला
It is not ours.
दईवत इंदा दानमान
It is a gift from the Lord.
कई उन्नाट्त दईवत सुधिसे
It is a gift from the Lord, would you give thanks?
निंगल करियामो
Do you know?
ओरो वागनुम
Every vehicle.
अदिन आगत्त शक्ति अनिसरिचान अन कवरिंग, बोडीगर कवरिंग
And all the bodies of the vehicle are dependent on the power that is given to it.
रंडाइरम हॉर्स पॉवर लुड़े वागनतिन कवरिंग, अदिन अनिसरिचायिरिक
And a vehicle that has two thousand horsepower, the body of it would be based on that power.
Eight hundred horsepower लुड़न अनिसरिचम
And the vehicle with eight hundred horsepower will have a body accordingly.
ओर ट्रेन्ड इंचिंड कवरिंग वरिंबोल, अदिन शक्ति वाल्ला कवरिंग आयिरिक
And the train's engine's power will decide the covering of the body of that train.
ओर बिमानतिन इंचिंड शक्ति वालिदान अन द कवरिंग वालिदायिरिक
And because the engine of an airplane is greater, the body is different and according to that.
अदिन कालोक वालिदान रॉकेटिन शक्ति
And more greater is the rockets.
अदिन कवरिंग अदिन एका शक्ति आयिर्न बोडी
And the body that is given to it is more powerful than any other thing.
न्याम बानसलाकिदराम
Let me explain to you.
ओर जेटिन्ड अल्लंकिल रॉकेटिन्ड इंचिन अड्डत
And if you take the engine of a rocket.
Eight hundred car पिटिये इद्दत
And if you fix, fit it in a vehicle with eight hundred.
अदन स्टार्टे इदाल
And if you start it.
एन्गन इरिक्यु
What will happen?
अदिन वादिल मान्चसरी कड़कु
And you will see it explode probably.
हेले लुया, अदिन डस्टीरिंग ए, एडु कड़कु, बर्मिंग यांगी कड़कु
It will explode, probably the steering will reach Birmingham.
पुम्मन्न शप्पन के का
You will hear an explosion.
पुम्मन्न शप्पन के का
You will only hear an explosion.
ई वादिल पाप्पन बिन्न अम्पड़ा पोनम, वादिल पाप्पन अम्पड़ा पोनम वादिल पाप्पन उल्लु पोनम
Then in order to search the door, we'll have to go several places.
एन्नल अत्यंद शक्ति मनकुड़ारतिल पिटिये रिक्या
But this great power is given to us in this clay or body of clay. This has been given to us in this body of clay.
नम्मड़ा सौरक्तिल कोण्डान रॉकेटिन नगत्त विटिये रिक्या
And we have been given a rocket in order to take us to heaven.
ई रॉकेटिन नगत्त इरुन्निट्टु, हेले लुया
Even though this great power is within us.
नम्मल कुड़ियु वोगा अत्तल पुदमान
It is amazing that we are not destroyed.
नकला इदिन्ड साउंड बोगुन्न निक एन्न अर्गिल्ला, इदे चला विश्वासिकले पोल्यान तून एडकेडके माइक ओरक्का पर्याय पनिया प्राइज़ लॉर्ड, प्राइज़ लॉर्ड, न्यांक बरयारिकिनु किला कारण नम्मल इल्लाकतु निकिनु वर्यु पोपर्ला
मैन
कई अर्थ इदित सुधिसे शक्ति
हेले लुया
ई अत्यंद शक्ति नम्मड़ा सोम्दावल्ला
And this great power is not ours.
न्यां पर्याय बानसलाकनुन्डो
Do you understand?
नम्मड़ा कुन्य अकी तुल्ला लिस्टाल्ल
Our children don't like all this jumping and all.
नम्मड़ा तलमुरगल कान्यवाश शाबमानमल अभिमानम आकन
Our children should be proud of the tongues that the Lord gives us and should not be ashamed of it.
न्यानल माभिषेगम ब्राबिचमन अनु पर्यायिनु अभिमान थोड़े आयिरिक
And very proudly you should say that I am a person anointed by the Holy Spirit, it should not be of shame.
निंगड़ा मक्कल डॉक्टर आकम्ब संधोषिच
You would be joyful if your children are become doctors.
इंजीनियर और साइंडिस्ट आकम्ब स्तोत्रम पर्याय
Say praise the Lord if they become engineers or scientists.
एन्नल तुडिकिनु हरयतोड़ तुलुम्पुन्न कन्नगलोड़ नी दईवत सुधिकिनु एप्पल नरियामो, नी आराधिकिनु होली निंद दलमुर निंद मोम्बिल वागु मुटिमेल निन्न अन्यवाशे दईवत आराधिकिनु कानुम्बो, निंद कन्नगल नरण्य काविन्न
But your eyes will have tears and your heart should beat faster. When you see your children come to the church, kneel down, bow down in the presence of the Lord and when they speak in the tongues that the Lord fills them with the spirit of the Lord.
कई अर्थ इच्छु कई अर्थ इच्छु नोन्डात मक्कल अन दईवत सुधिसोन्ड इरुन्नो निराति दईयो निन्हे अभिषेगम छय्यु बाला, रगला, हदना, रगला, समथा ना, दिया पाप्पन अंड चिक्की पड़द बरयम्बो
And when they say that Papa, I am saved.
पाप्पन यान मानसान्तर पड़द बरयम्बो
When they say that Papa, I am repented.
मम्मी, यान अभिषेगम ब्राबिच्चु बरयम्बो
When they say mommy, I'm filled with the Holy Spirit.
नी तुल्लिस्तुधिकिनु दईवत
You need to leap and give praise unto the Lord.
लंदनी वरान गए इदिने को, वालिया भाक्य बान इन्द तलमुर अभिषेगम ब्राबिकिनु
More rover than coming to London is a blessing if your children are filled with the Holy Spirit.
शक्ति ओड़ा, एल्माभिदईवत यार हल्लजोनरी तालाराबास, शंभलारिधानाबास, समथलिया पंद्रण्ड वर्षत्त रेक्तसावकारी आयस सकोदरी पंद्रण्ड वर्षत्त रेक्तसावकारी आयस वी
We know the woman who was bleeding for twelve years.
वाइदिन माराल एरियोन सकिचाव
And it's the one who was forsaken by even the doctors.
ओर दिवस ओर तीरमान तोड़वल बीडुबित्त रंगी
And one day she took a decision and she left her home.
आ तीरमानम इन्न यान एश्विने तोडुमन आयिर्न
And the decision was that I am going to touch Jesus today.
मोशेगन आयप्रमान से रेक्तसावकारी पुरतरंग
And according to the law given to Moses, a bleeding woman should not come out of the house.
रंगियाल कलर्न यो कोल्लन
And if she comes, she should be stoned to death.
पर्से अन्नवल तीरमान चेन्दु वन्नाल यान बीटी नरक
But she took a decision, no matter what, I am going to go.
यान एश्विने तोडु
And I am going to touch Jesus.
इदराति एश्विने तोड़ा नथ्रविड़ वन्न टुड़
How many of you have come here to touch Jesus?
नूर गणकिन विश्वासिकल कुड़नलावान विड़
And this is a place with more than hundred believers.
निंगल की योगतिल समंदिकान दईवम कृपा तल्ली, भागितल्ली
But the Lord gave you the grace to come and attend this meeting today.
प्रासंगिने काननल्ला
You haven't come here to see the preacher.
विश्वासिकले काननल्ला
You haven't come here to see your fellow believers.
एश्विने तोड़ा नथ्रवर वन्न टुड़
How many of you have come here to touch Jesus? How many of you have come here to touch Jesus?
कर्ताविन्ड करन्ने तोड़ा दिन राति पर्याय किल्ला
And if the Lord
समथलारिया, उडमा रकूनिया अबड़े इरिकिनु एन्यान
And it is written there.
अवल पुरिशारते वगन्यमाटी एश्व कर्ताविन्ड वास्त्रतिन तंगलिल तोटु
And in midst of the crowd, she comes and she touches the thread of the robe of Jesus.
तोट्टमात्र इडिमिन कलक अवलक दईव शक्ति बियाबरिच
And the moment she touched Jesus, she experienced that power within her.
स्वर्षणमात्र राषुत्त विषुत्याय
And the moment she touched, uncleanliness had become clean.
रोगिनी परिवुन सौक्यमुल वालाय
She was made whole, she was healed.
ओह, हेले लुया, एश्विने तोटाल बिड़दला
If you touch Jesus, there is deliverance.
एश्विने तोटाल सौक्यम
If you touch Jesus, you will be healed.
तेजसिन्ड प्रभयुम, तत्तुत्तिन मुत्रयुम आयवन अडु तूड़ात विलच्चतिल वसिकिनुवन, इदराति विड़े करकी वन्न टुड़
And he is the glory of glories and he is the father of everything, he is here in midst of us.
इदराति अवन नम्मड़ा नदुविल उल्लाभिकुण रिकुगय
And as he walks in midst of us tonight.
विश्वासतिन करंगल नीट्टी नी अवने तोटाल, निंदमेल दईव शक्ति इदरातिल बियाबरी पन्नोगय
And with faith in your heart, if you would touch him today, then you will experience his deliverance.
इलेक्ट्रिसिटी पायुन वायर, इदित तोलाइल टालुन कड़पमिल्ला, इंसुलेशन उल्लर तोलो
And even if you put an electricity wire on you, it won't be a problem because there is insulation.
एन्नल इंसुलेशन माट्टी तोटु नोकनम ईवरम अर्गिम
But without an insulation, you should touch a live wire, then you would know what happens.
ईराति कर्ताविड़ वन्न टुड़
Here, tonight, the Lord is here.
नी विश्वासन करंगल नीट्टी अवने तोटाल
And with faith, if you would touch him tonight.
निंद अडु तिरिकिनु सावजीमार अर्गितिल्ला
You may not, the other person may not know.
एन्नल नी अन्न अर्गियु निंदमेल शक्ति बियाबरिच
But you would know the power go through you.
निंद अडु तिरिकिनु सावजीमार अर्गितिल्ला
The person sitting next to you may not know.
नी अन्न अर्गियु निंदमेल बिड़दल बियाबरिच
But you would know that you have been delivered today.
कई अर्थ इच्छु दईवत सुधिके
And would you worship the Lord in tongues tonight?
इबड़े ओर आराधिनिक्य वरिम्बो
And every meeting when you come.
नी दईव करत्तन स्वर्षणमेट्यु वेनम अड़क
You want to receive the touch of Jesus and return back home.
दईव इंदा करत्तन स्वर्षणमेट्यु अड़क
You want to experience the touch of Jesus and return back home.
अबाना रखाना, समथा, रिखाना, उडमा रकूनियम तुरियान इदिन आगत्तु वारिनुवन मुलिच्चु गुवनम, विड़ा दईवत इंदा सानित्य उन्डन
And when everyone who comes inside should know when they go back that there is the presence of God here.
निंगल प्रार्थित छन
You need to pray.
दिन आगत्तु तुरिवन मन्नाल बिलिच्चु बरयनम, ईवरा दईवत इंदा सानित्यम फीलियन
And if one comes here, they should say that we can experience the presence of the Lord.
प्राइज़ लॉर्ड
हेले लुया
एन्ड आनल संगिर्त्र करन्ने पर्याय
And what does the Samus say?
अन्नकन निंद महुत्तुम, बरवुम काने इन्न दिन, यान विषुत्तमतिन निन्हे नोकीरिक
And so that I may see your glory and honor, I look unto the temple of the Lord.
नी दिन आगत्तु वारिनु पास्टर एकाननल्ला, सगविश्वासिक एकाननल्ला, दईव इंदा मगुतागान आरार
You do not come inside this place in order to see the pastor or your fellow believers, but you come here to see the glory of the Lord.
नुड़ा कई अर्थ इच्छु ओड़ा दईवत यार अधिसार
And would you clap your hands and with strength would you worship him again?
Yes, Jesus अबड़े इरिकिनु पदम, अबड़े इरिकिनु पदम
And what is written here?
अवल विरच्चु कोण्डु निन्नु यन्न
It says that she was shivering as she stood.
And when you walk through that place, they shake. The reason is because you do not know the mightiness of the power that is within you. When you walk through those roads, They start to shake. Because the one who is with you. Is greater than the one who is with them. The one who is with me. Is greater than the one who is with them. Amen. The word is that the one who is with me. The word is that who's, sorry? So the one who is with me. And the ones who are with them, many those who are with them. Because there are many with them. They could have one hundred thirty corals. But my dear children of God, those who are serving the Lord, you have one with you. You have one with you. But the one who is with you is greater, mightier than the three hundred corals of them with them. This was a thought of mine. Would you confess with your mouth and say the one who is with me? Is greater than the three hundred thirty corals with them. Because he alone does a miracle of things. Hallelujah.
Amen.
Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. It is very important to be filled with the Holy Spirit. And I said last night. And if you want to live on the earth. And the one who did not need the Holy Spirit was Jesus Christ. And Luke, uh, Luke chapter four, it says that Jesus, uh, filled, full of the Holy Spirit returned. Luke chapter four verses fourteen also says the same. And Jesus returned in the power of the Spirit to Galilee. Acts chapter ten verses thirty-eight. And how God anointed Jesus of Nazareth with the Holy Spirit and with power. And if Jesus Christ needed Holy Spirit, then how much more do we need it? And the second person who did not need Holy Spirit is there on the earth. And it is the mother of Jesus, Mary. Because Jesus was born in the spirit. But we know that in the upper room, as they were gathered, even Mary received the Holy Spirit. And the third person who did not ever need the Holy Spirit. They were the disciples of Jesus. Apostles. The reason is they learned at the feet of Jesus. But the Lord said that stay in the city until you receive the power from heaven. The apostles needed the power of the Holy Spirit. So therefore, it is, is it not important for us? The first century church were the people who were filled with the Holy Spirit. And if Peter, John, or the disciple, or even Jesus' mother, Mary, if they come to London. They will not walk around looking for the churches built in their name. They will come to a place where people, those who worship, sitting on their knees and worship in spirit. Because they were Pentecostals. Hallelujah. If Jesus needed the Holy Spirit. And if the disciples needed it. Then it is needed for us too. Who gives the Holy Spirit? Book of Luke chapter twenty-four verses forty-two. We read. Stay in the city until you receive the power of, the power from heaven. So if the power is coming from above. So the one who gives is also seated above. It is a power from high. Nobody else, no one has authority to give this. Luke chapter eleven verses thirty-three. Those who are your, your children, you give them good things. Then you ask them, how many things do you give them? It says that if you, then who are evil, know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will the heavenly Father give the Holy Spirit to those who ask Him? John chapter seven thirty-five, we read. The great day Jesus stood up and cried out, if anyone thirsts, let him come to me and drink. The great day Jesus stood up and cried out, if anyone thirsts, let him come to me and drink. And it shall flow from within them. Holy Spirit does not come to you from external to eternal, but it flows from within and flows outside. The one who, the things that you need to receive externally can't be given by anyone, but the one that you need to come from within can't be given by anyone. You need the Jesus of Nazareth who needs to come within you. And if Jesus is within you, then he shall flow the spirit of the river of spirit within you. And if you come to me, I will give you Holy Spirit in a touch manner. That is not what Jesus said. He said it will flow from within. Pay attention to me. And Elijah, who was a prophet. And his disciple, Elisha. And Elijah asked Elisha that before I am taken up, what is it that you want me to do for you? What did Elisha ask? Did he say that give me the ministry of preaching? And would you give me the gift of prophecy? Would you give me the gift of healing? Is that what Elisha asked? What did he ask? He said, I want double portion of the power of the spirit. That means whatever it is for you, I do not want that. What I want is the double portion of the spirit that is within you. Because he knows that if he has the spirit, anything is possible. If there is spirit, there will be miracles. If there is spirit, there will be prophecy. And if there is spirit, you will see great deeds. So what did Elijah say? He said that you have asked a hard thing. Elijah just did not say that take it. And he said, you have asked a hard thing. Who is Elijah? Who is Elijah? What a walkie, marabeejavan. The one with one word was able to bring rain. The one who was able to stop the clouds from raining to one word. The one who brought fire on Mount Carmel with one word. Do you understand what I am saying? And if there is someone here to pray, then you will see the rain of God. And if there is someone to pray, then you will see the fire on Carmel. And if there is someone to pray, you will see the fire from heaven. And if there is someone to pray, you will see many dead ones in the city of London bring back to life. Hallelujah.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. So the one with one prayer, if he is able to stop the clouds from raining. The one who is able to stop the clouds with one prayer. The one who is able to bring back people from death. The one who brings fire down. If Elijah did not have the authority to give the spirit. Then who has the authority to give spirit? There is nobody who has got the authority to give the Holy Spirit. There is only one above who has the authority to give the Holy Spirit. And tonight, if you ask him. And he has enough to give you until you say that it is enough, Lord. And which strength would you clap hands and give glory to the Lord? Yes. The wind will blow wherever it desires. And in, and we read that there is nobody there who is able to stop the spirit. And our children need to listen to this. Youngsters, listen to this carefully. And believers, listen. There is nobody who's given authority to stop the Holy Spirit. We can pray for you. But it is the Lord who's, who's able to give you the Holy Spirit. But there are a group of people who are just following other people in order to receive the Holy Spirit. And somebody sent me a video. One is fallen and he is shivering like anything. And more other people, they have fallen, they are all on him. In order to take the spirit from him. And there is another one in the spirit when he comes, he slaps people on their cheeks. My dear children, leaping and all jumping is not the spirit of the Lord. And every tongue that you speak is not the tongue from the Lord. And every prophecy is not from the Lord. Every revelation is not from the Lord. And you need to examine believers, what is from the Lord. It is the one who is seated above who is able to give us the Holy Spirit. You do not have to depend on any human. There is only one leader for us. And that is Jesus Christ. The one, there is, there is only one who gave the praise for us. You do not have to follow any person. It has to be the Lord Jesus Christ. Jesus. Jai Shri Jai. And if you ask, he shall give it to you. There is a book by D L Moody. The power from above. And he writes about how he received the Holy Spirit. And through my study in the Word of God. He studied about the Holy Spirit. And one day he was walking on the road praying. And he said, the Lord, if this is true, give it to me. And because he was a man of God, the Lord heard his prayer. And D L Moody experienced the power of the Holy Spirit. And he started to speak in tongue and started to worship the Lord. And D L Moody felt thought that, okay, Lord, not, not now, not now, because other people will misunderstand that he's probably drunk. And after some time, he saw a friend's house. And he knocked on the door. They opened the door. And he asked, what do you want? He said, I want a room. I want a room to pray. D L Moody, he knelt on his knees. And he raised his hands to heaven. And he proclaimed. Lord, D L Moody, this, this man of clay. Here I submit myself. And this great power of yours. You may fill it as much as you want, Lord. And as he started to pray. And there was the power of the Lord in that room. And as there is a ball that would bounce. He started to leap and jump in that room. He started to sing in the spirit. And he started to roll. And he started to dance in the Holy Spirit. And in the evening, D L Moody said. And he said, Lord, it's enough. This is a clay, this is a body of clay. And if you continue, I would not. Do you have the thirst for it? Do you have the desire for it? The Lord is able to give you the Holy Spirit as much as you would say in the. I would like to take time and teach this. Because we need to teach this in the church. Because many have, have been misunderstood. We need to know about the gift of the spirit. There are many others, very spirits that are there. So you should not be deceived by any spirit. Do not be deceived by any spirit. You do not have to bear all spirits. You cannot bow down in front of everything. Because in the end times, the devil is deceiving people. Why does the Lord fill us with the Holy Spirit? And I would like to conclude by explaining that to you. So that we are led in all truth. John chapter four. So that we are led in all truth. Why the Lord fills us with the Holy Spirit? So that we may have a victorious life. So that we may have the fruits and the gifts of the Holy Spirit. Galatians five nineteen, if you read. So we can see the works of flesh. We can also see the works, the fruits of the. And. And all these acts of flesh are obvious, actually morality, impurity, debauchery, idolatry, witchcraft, hatred, discord, jealousy, fits of rage, selfish ambition. And I, I wasn't meant to say this, but because the Holy Spirit brought us here. And what are the acts of the flesh? Durnadap, adhimadad, durnadap, ashutti, dushkamum, vighraharaadana, abijaram, bhaga, pinakam, yaresangam, krodam, shaddham. And you are, you are. And all these lists that says, it says, and they like, these people who live like this will not inherit the kingdom of God. And being, being drunk, drinking drunkenness is a sin. And idol worship is a sin. Durnadap, pinnadap. Having discord, is it a sin? Koban bawaanu. Being angry, fits of rage. Fits of rage. Having hatred. Look how the spirit just went. The word of God says, those who live their life like this will not inherit the kingdom of God. Then if that's so, the one who has hatred, they will not go. The ones who have got anger will not go. Those who have fits of rage, you will not inherit. And because of time constraint, I'm running. And when you read, read it along with it. And for many times, many ages, there are people, those who have got this hatred. But let the church be filled with the fruit of the spirit. Why does the Lord fill us with the Holy Spirit? So that we may have a victorious life. It is for our victory that we, we are filled with Holy Spirit. Why has the Lord filled us with the Holy Spirit? So that impossibles can be made possible. And another name for the apostles. The acts of the Holy Spirit. The acts of the Holy Spirit. It means that the work of the Holy Spirit. Ordinary people. When the Holy Spirit came upon them. We read about the extraordinary works that were done by them in the acts of the apostles. You could be an ordinary person. But when the spirit of the Lord comes upon you, you become, you do extraordinary deeds. Hallelujah. Then you become extraordinary.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Pay attention. And let me explain it to you in one word. When the spirit came on David. Then he did not have anything in his hand. He did not have anyone with me. When they, when people came to take his goodness. And the lion and, and the. And it, we read that he tear tore them apart. When the Holy Spirit comes upon you, the Lord has given it. It is not so that you may speak few words and you stop. In the goodness of your spirit. The goodness of your. The powers of darkness that come to steal it. And this anointing is there in order to fight against it. That is why you have been filled with the Holy Spirit. And would you worship the Lord with power? Hallelujah. Kujia, dayo ndinana ndinamela atmaavene thandava. And it is the Lord who has given us the Holy Spirit. When David was alone. When the lion came towards him. And that time, the spirit of the Lord came upon him. Would you say Apollo? Apollo. 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 When. When the lion came. And when the. The Holy Spirit came upon him. Whenever you need the grace, that is the time that grace shall be given to you. Whenever you need the power of the spirit. The power of the spirit shall come upon you. Do you know child, why the spirit of God is given to you? Even when you have nothing in your hand. When you have nobody with you. You have been given the power in order to destroy the power of darkness that come towards you to destroy your life. The one that comes to destroy you, you destroy them in the name of Jesus. The one who comes to restrain you, you restrain them in the name of Jesus. And one who comes to tear you apart, you tear them apart in the name of Jesus. And that is why you have been given the spirit of the Lord. It is not for merely speaking in tongues. Hallelujah. It is for a victorious life. Why has the Lord given us this Holy Spirit on us? Do not grieve the Holy Spirit. And that is why for redemption, we have been given, we have been sealed. There is a seal on us. Let me conclude and tell you this quickly. A big raga shapeda, a speeda, a manikuril, idivatayaiyade kilometer. And in a, in a hour, it is twenty thousand kilometers, that is the speed of a rocket. In a, in a, yeah, hour, it is only twenty thousand kilometers. So for a rocket to reach moon, it is sixty-five thousand hour, hours that is needed. And if a vehicle that in an hour that would drive for two lakh kilometers. And if you put a man and send him. And if in three hours, he will reach moon. The Mars, the, the planet. It is, it is three corors miles away from earth. And from this recent speed. If you want to reach there. It will take us ten and a half months. And if a vehicle is found, which would run for two lakh miles in an hour. You would reach in two weeks. And the stars are much further than this. And a star that is near to the earth. Imagine is proxima. And the distance is twenty-six thousand lakh kilo miles, kilometers. And if, again with the recent speed. It will take seven corors and twenty lakh years in order to reach there. And if there is a vehicle that would run two lakh miles per hour. And if you send a person. In order to send us, to send to star. It will take fourteen thousand corrode years in order to reach. But the door of the paradise that the Lord is preparing for the church. It is not near proxima. It is thousands and thousands corors miles away from here. And in the language of Simon, sir. And if you go miles and miles away. And can you even imagine the way, the journey that you're going to have? I preach to thousands of people. And I often ask. You have to say whether yes or no. Dayvathinda sapa, i poomiyae veli velichya, guruthaanga shakti veli velichya, parthi isura teerata tan etra varsha vada kom, padinaalaiyada varsha vada kom. Ila. Padinaalai varsha vada kom. Will the church take fourteen thousand years in order to reach that place that the Lord is preparing for us? Fourteen years. Will it be four two days? Fourteen hours. The answers to it is no, no, no. It will be. A moment of the night. The righteous shall fly up. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. How would it, how would it be possible? Jesus Christ. And from the dead. The same power that resurrected him. And if the same power is within us. And this lowly body shall be transformed into a glorified body. And in the blink of an eye, we will be transformed. Do not grieve the Holy Spirit. And that is why you've been given the seal of the Holy Spirit on you. When the children of God worship in the spirit. They leap up and down. You leap up and down. Why do you jump up and down? When you worship in the spirit. And there is a fire that is ignited to the rocket with it. And this rocket would say, I wanna go up, I wanna go up. Let me go, I wanna go. The flesh would say, no, remain here, let's stay here. But one day, we are going to forsake the power of the earth and we are going to go. And we shall fly and we shall go. And that rocket would take us home. And let me tell you one more thing. Death. Cemetery. People are scared of it. Maybe you would talk about the death of other people, but you won't even think or you don't want to talk about your own death. And we are lying on a coffin here. And we are not even there, we are not made to, made, we are made to lie there. And some people would spray this perfume here and there. And they would be putting these powders on us. And we haven't even dreamt of it. Because we have, we are part of giving that powder. We have given sprays and perfumes to people. And you would say the blood of Jesus if you would see or think about such things. No matter what you say, there'll a day when you would leave. We don't like it. Because the flesh doesn't desire to go from here. You are fearful. You would pray that Lord, just take me home. But when you face death, then you'll see. And one Amachi, because of the fight with the daughter-in-law, she would often say, the Lord, just take me, take me.
Edhaisin, edhaisin, naatle karandikattina samaytha, kochan, kochmon, thattum poruthu kiri.
And once there was a power cut and the grandson was on the, on the, on the top floor.
Nadav savanu vadi mogalu, nu vili ch.
And from the rooftop he called out and said that daughter.
Amachi vada edukku.
Only the grandma was there.
Jana ne edukkam buwan varam.
And he said that I am going to take you.
Amachi varunjum, ah, jana parinu ne edukkala.
And the amachi said that, Lord, I just said it like that, please don't take me.
Namakka maranam nekkekun peediyaa.
We are scared of death.
Paesethara peedijanu ponnam.
No matter how fearful you are, you have to go. No matter how fearful you are.
Kellkarai, tan kagalaadoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam pitthu, teja serumpure. Oh, kellkar, ayu, kaya, makalaani. Nam pogarai, ipathalam pitthu, teja serumpure. Pratyashayenidhi, vartidhi chidundhi, angujandu kaduvaanapriyapunbogam. Pratyashayenidhi, vartidhi chidundhi, angujandu kaduvaanapriyapunbogam. Kellkarai, tan kagalaadoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam pitthu, teja serumpure. Oh, kellkarai, tan kagalaadoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam pitthu, teja serumpure. Oh, anandavi, nityanandavi, adalodu varunkada metrayanandam. Anandavi, nityanandavi, adalodu varunkada metrayanandam. Oh, kellkarai, tan kagalaadoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam pitthu, teja serumpure. Nam pogarai, ipathalam pitthu, teja serumpure. Kandu, sankati marikandu.
See how it all changed?
Sankati marikandu.
Did you see how it all changed?
Maranam ka parinu needu vada.
We were thinking about death.
Kellkarai, kagalaadoni varam.
But we're gonna hear the trumpet call.
Oru kudipa.
And there, there was this hope.
Hello, manasilaayo.
Do you understand?
Niaga thirikkunnu vana angeluna vana akaraka.
Because the one that is within is, is from the power.
Jadathinu chindavi vada kada kana.
The desire of the flesh will remain here.
Abishega brabichavu vandu, yugruvillavu vandu, chikkappattavu vandu. I pratyashoda pathu varanam variyaa rukudipa.
And the one who is anointed, filled with the spirit and redeemed, when you sing such songs, they're gonna leap for joy.
Ilanam maranathin maila jayam.
And that is the victory over death.
Hey, uyarti adi sathram parinu.
And would you lift your hands and give glory?
Edhakunnu nirthu vana ne karnu vada.
I do not know where to start.
Enna nirthiya okathu vallu.
But I have to stop.
Isaiah projeena ambathommanu nidi vatiyavana.
Isaiah fifty nine twenty one.
Bada vanna varam bhaibal thorakka.
Please open your bibles.
Veyadavusam kundu vandu varam thorakka.
Everyone who's brought their bibles, open your bibles.
Adi varekika.
And.
Ivaakitinda vadi varekika.
And draw a line to that verse.
Putya bhaibal aanu varekana.
Even if it is new, draw it.
Inna, enna vada samasari chari nilan donu, inna leu, amama vada unda yedunu. Avu, jana padimunu, padinatuvarsha mombi charchi vada pol. Jana parinu ne, varechu vachu prarthichu ru, amami inna vada vandu samasari, pasu kandale.
There was an auntie who came yesterday who heard the word of God eighteen years ago, what I said, she had marked it and she kept praying for it and she was here yesterday.
Ithu vaathatthama yetta thaneerka talamura levi chunnu varam.
And many people received the children because of the promise that was given to them.
Padinatuvarsha mombu parinu ne, deva vaath, jana paravayu vannu allanu parinu vada polu, nirthi kipattu vandu kenu varam.
And I am not a prophet, but eighteen years ago, what I said, all that has been fulfilled in the word of God.
Ithu vaaki amni jana parayapidu vada.
And I'm going to say that verse.
Okay, vaaki, 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 yaarvaajay, vaajay, say up chapter fifty nine, verse twenty one, pasu yaarunu vaajay.
Fifty nine twenty one.
Oral vaaki, ningal varejo, illanu viti payu varejoonam, okay, vaaki. Ah. Yes. Hmm. Hmm.
Nindha vaal ninnum, nindha sandhrudi vada vaal ninnum, nindha sandhrudi vada sandhrudi vada vaal ninnum, innum vada loru narun vittu vogi illa, ne ho varle chenu.
Kandakil kayu uyarti sathram varam.
Hallelujah.
Ithu vaaki ningal varekana.
And you need to mark this word.
Namadame vittil daavli vayitu prarthikku vada kai vachu prarthik.
And when you pray day and night, place your hands on this word and pray.
Jana vada chedikke, nee moida, idha, udme kovya vadi chenu. Nindamaila vada vandu atma vaa. Nindha vaal jana vandu vajanavu. Nindha vaal ninnum, nindha sandhrudi vada vaal ninnum, nindha sandhrudi vada sandhrudi vada vaal ninnum. Oru narun vittu marila.
As for me, this is my covenant with them, says the Lord, my spirit who is on you will not depart from you and my words that I have put in your mouth will always be on your lips, on the lips of your children.
Deva vaathattham anjar kettan tharavu vannu vallu.
And it is not the promise that you will have a five or six star buildings.
New brand kaar korata tharavu vallu.
It is not that you will have many cars.
Arakka kittungu vayajo.
If you, if you get it, take it.
Deva vandana vaathattham.
But the promise of the Lord is.
Nindamaila vada vandu atma vaa.
The spirit that is on you.
Nindha vaal jana vandu vajanavu.
And the word that has put up, I put in your mouth.
Nindha vaal ninnum.
From your mouth.
Nindha sandhrudi vada vaal ninnum.
From the lips of your children.
Nindha sandhrudi vada sandhrudi vada vaal ninnum.
From the lips of their descendants.
Oru narun vittu marila.
Will not depart from you.
Indu vada narakamumbu.
Before you go from here.
Renjinu kai vacha.
And put your hands on your chest.
Renjinu kai vacha.
Put your hands on your chest.
Kai sorakatila kuyarti.
And would you raise your hands to heaven?
Kada vada karejoon vada narakana.
And you need to go home with tears.
Kasave.
Lord.
Nindamaila vandu vandu atma vaa.
And your spirit of the Lord.
Nindha vaal nee vandu vajanavu.
And the word that you have put in my mouth. From my mouth.
Nindha sandhrudi vada vaal ninnum.
From my children's lips.
Nindha sandhrudi vada sandhrudi vada vaal ninnum.
From the lips of their descendants.
Oru narun vittu varanu.
Will not ever depart.
Nindamaila vandu vandu atma vaa.
And the spirit who is on you.
Nindha vaal nee vandu vajanavu.
And the words that I have put in your mouth. Will be on my lips.
Nindha sandhrudi vada sandhrudi vada vaal.
The lips of my children.
Vittu maru, nee prarthikana mangi.
You need to pray that it will not depart.
Adhim, adhim, nindamaila deva vandu atma vandayirikana.
First, the spirit should be on you.
Nindha vaal deva vandu atma vandayirikana.
And in your mouth, the word of the Lord should be with you.
Adhim, nee prarthik nee nindamaila vandu vandu atma vane pakaranay.
First, you need to pray that the spirit may be given to you.
Makala, ningal prarthikenda papu vandamaila abarikkenu, nindha mammy vandamaila abarikkenu, deva sakka di, nindamaila abarikana.
My dear children, you need to pray that the spirit that is on your father and mother would be given unto you.
Allavu kandiva chedundanukka.
Would you all rise to your feet?
Deva makal, namadame athyandi lechisthanam, nittu daya.
My dear children of God, our objective, our goal is to reach eternity.
Your presence at devotion is not your final destination. Nindipodathas avastha, nindha athyandi lechisthanavalla.
Amen.
The best is not to come. London alla, New York alla. Jana idhu parayadu vannu poila, oru dosa kettayali idhu parinu ne. Canada alla, namadame destination.
Amen. It is not London, New York or Canada that is our final destination.
Namaladekula yatra ilan.
We are on a journey.
Namalidhu vada vada thila.
And we haven't yet reached our final destination.
Eppa kagala puri gunnari la.
We do not know when we will hear the trumpet call.
Apol buli varivu vadaari la.
We don't know when we will be cold.
Pogan readyaikunam.
Be ready to go.
Kai vada padarada.
Do not be, do not be left behind.
Imanne vandhi, manikam vidiyada.
And do not forsake the jewel for the unvaluable things.
Kada vada namal vili ch, mananakka kalku vandhi alla.
Our Lord did not call us for the mud and for the dust over here.
Etthara vegaatil kettidu ponnam.
You have to go.
Etthara vegaatil kettidu ponnam.
As soon as possible, we need to leave and go.
Nilanukkunadu vedi athvaanishonam.
And as much as you can, toil hard for the Lord.
Ningal kurappu vana jana abishega brabichanu.
And you need to have this assurance that you have received the holy spirit.
Idhu rathiyana, oru kana meen prarthichad.
And tonight, would you pray the Lord prepare me?
Etthara vada vandu varu, idhu rathiyani oru kana meen prarthichad.
And would you pray the Lord, if you're coming tonight, prepare me for your coming?
Shuti kana meen prarthichad.
And would you pray the Lord sanctify me?
Nindha samarpikinu, kai sorakatila kuyarti padichad.
And those who submit in such manner, would you lift your hands up?
Idhu rathiyana, namal shuti kari kana me.
Lord, tonight, would you cleanse us?
Idhu rathiyana, nindha atma vandu naravu namalai kana me.
And ascend to your filling of the spirit within us, Father.
Idhu rathiyana, abishega brabikada kada.
And this night, Lord, help us to be filled by your spirit.
Sila kuvavara vada narayapada kada.
Help us to be filled by the grace of the spirit.
Namaludil vadi pratyashan narayata kada.
And let them give us hope, God.
Daaga sankatin vandu vadi abishega brabikana me.
Let there be anointing on the core of God.
Idhu jadathin vandu vadi abishega brabikana me.
And all the people, those who gather, let them be anointing. And help us and prepare us for your coming, God.
Nindha karanchala thodundu sathram.
Thank you, Lord.
Esuvin namathil thanay.
In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Enna yogathana shani chil pratyaka namni.
And thank you very much for inviting me for this meeting.
Deva dhasanudan, sabhi vandu vandu namni arikka.
And I give greetings, I thank you to the pastor and the church.
Jana nee, usta vandu vadi chundu.
I have written many books.
Enna lipol jana rakki, ande atmakadhe vandu, one krubu vada thaneliyan chivida.
And I have written my biography, that I have recently written.
Uh, naalupaditthu anda, deva vandu narathy vadi galan.
And it is about how the ways that Lord has led me.
That is about how the ways that Lord has led me. You are giving me a message.
And I believe that it will touch your heart. I don't have any way to come and give you this book. I am trying if I am able to bring it to the country. I have written fourteen odd books.
I have written fourteen odd books.
And I am happy to send that book to an address that will be given and if you could give it to the pastor. Let us all pray, let us close our eyes. Let us all pray.
This is what I will pray.
And would you pray that Lord fill me tonight?
I will pray.
And those who have not received the Holy Spirit yet, would you pray?
With the sign of tongues, would you pray that Lord fill me with the Holy Spirit? If you are faithful in yourself, only then that the Lord will give you and trust you with other things.
And if you know the song, then close your eyes, clap your hands and sing the song. Otherwise, give praise unto the Lord. And trust yourself, trust in the blood of Christ. And would you cry and say the Lord anoint me?
God, you will tell us.
And then you will start speaking in the word that the Lord will give you.
We will pray.
And the worship team after singing the songs, worship.
Same song, the same song.
We are going to sing the same song that we sing.
We will pray.
And clap your hands and give praise unto the Lord.
Namana, rabbana, nikalkana, ramavuuya. Sarva yudangal, thari chiduga, dushthanodu thuttu, nindhu bijayam needuva. Sarva yudangal, thari chiduga, dushthanodu thuttu, nindhu bijayam needuva. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Syoth sayinave, unan needuvi, kulu bijayam thuttu, virudhu pravikya. Syoth sayinave, unan needuvi, shuru no vidyaavirudhu, virudhu pravikya. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Dhrisstesuvina, kastham sagichu, nitya nitya yugalvarum, shodgasio ni. Dhrisstesuvina, kastham sagichu, nitya nitya yugalvarum, shodgasio ni. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Pratyashayenidhi, vartee chidundhi, anugandhukanu varan, priyakunbu. Pratyashayenidhi, vartee chidundhi, anugandhukanu varan, priyakunbu. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Sharanamvi, dhipyashanamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda, bhuvanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Sarva yudangal, thari chiduga, dushthanodu thuttu, nindhu bijayam needuva. Sarva yudangal, thari chiduga, dushthanodu thuttu, nindhu bijayam needuva. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Dhrisstesuvina, kastham sagichu, nitya nitya yugalvarum, shodgasio ni. Dhrisstesuvina, kastham sagichu, nitya nitya yugalvarum, shodgasio ni. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Pratyashayenidhi, vartee chidundhi, anugandhukanu varan, priyakunbu. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda, ananda vi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. Ramanamvi, dhipyaranamvi, adalodu varunkala metrayananda. Kailkarai, than kagaaladoni, nam pogarai, ipathalam mitte, teja serumpure. This is what I have done this evening. I have been praying for my heart. This is what I have done this evening. I have been praying for my heart. I have been praying for my heart. I have been praying for my heart. God, I pray. My heart is beating. I have been praying for my heart. I have been praying for my heart. I have been praying for my heart. This evening, I have been praying for my heart. 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 All of you, we pray. I have been praying for my heart. I have been praying for my heart. All of you, we pray. I have been praying for my heart. I have been praying for my heart. All of you, we pray. I have been praying for my heart. I have been praying for my heart. In the name of Jesus. In the name of God, we pray. This is what I have done this evening. We arranged the meeting. This evening, we have been praying for my heart. We have been praying for my heart. Many people have been praying. I have been praying for my heart. I have been praying for my heart.
I present thank the Lord for this blessed time that God has given for each of us to gather. As we come to the close of this blessed time in learning and reflection, I stand before you with a heartfelt gratitude. Heavenly Father, thank you for your grace and mercy that you have shown us to come and gather, learn the word of God and to grow in faith. As in Psalms 119, verse 130 says that, "The entrance of thy word gives life." And we have experienced the light for the last three days. Even though you are busy scheduling in UK, thank you for coming across. As we say that we are deeply appreciate your presence and the powerful message that you have delivered for the last three days. Your message was filled with clarity, passion and profound insight. We deeply are deeply inspired by your powerful messages for the last three days and the tireless devotion of God's word. May the Lord's hand guide you mightly as you serve for his kingdom. Not but the last or not but the least. The whole LPC family, we thank you for your love and support. All the coys, the media, brothers, sisters, youths and our loving children, thank you for coming across and your love and support us. Thank you once again and may the Lord bless each one of us. Thank you.
Amen.
This is what I have done this evening. I have been praying for my heart. This is what I have done this evening. I have been praying for my heart. 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 My husband is my husband. I have been praying for my heart. 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 This evening, we will pray. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, God, yes. This is what I have done this evening. This is what I have done this evening.